Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger.
Here.
Ms. Feigl.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Ms. Henson.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
Ms. Lawless.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McCord.
Mr. Myers.
Mr. Stenit.
Mr. Beard.
Present.
Mr. Blues.
Here.
And Ms. Crosby.
Thank you. We have a quorum present. We'll call the meeting door. The first item on the agenda is invocation, and it is my pleasure to welcome one of our own, Chaplain Gerard Hale from the Division of Community Corrections. Please rise.
Let us bow together in prayer. Great One, Creator of the heavens and the earth, One who governs the sun by day and the stars by night, who created humanity, male and female, ever-present in the grass that grows in the air we breathe. To you we turn this evening in a spirit of celebration. We celebrate our liberty this evening not with bursting fireworks or the blast of banned instruments, not with the fanfare of a 5K successfully run, or in colors of red, white, and blue. Rather, we celebrate our liberty with this deliberating body of council representatives elected by and serving the people of Fayette County. Bless the dreams that are emerging, bless the deliberate action that are necessary in a downturn economy, bless the lives that benefit or feel the pinch of the decisions, and bless the citizens of this county. As we invest ourselves not only in individual liberty but also in community building, to you, Holy One, we give ourselves one with humanity and one with you. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Hale. Madam Clerk, if you would give a second reading to the ordinances entitled a second reading.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance creating Article IV, Section 7-39 through 7-43 of the Code of Ordinances, Lexington, Fayette Urban County Government, to establish an abandoned urban property classification for the purpose of ad valorem taxation, which rate is to be set by the Urban County Government at a rate which does not exceed the maximum rate allowable by law and which is based upon each $100 of the January 1 assessment value of the property, and providing for a determination by the Vacant Property Review Commission of each such property with a list to be provided to the Division of Revenue and the Office of the Fayette County Property Valuation Administrator by January 1 of each year. The removal of properties from the list upon a showing that the property no longer meets the criteria, an annual notice of determination mailed to owners or other interested parties, and appeal within 30 days of, and the Vacant Property Review Commission, to establish policies and procedures, and amending Section 12-82 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for fulfillment of duties by the Vacant Property Review Commission. Number two, an ordinance amending subsections 18C-2, subsection 1 of the Code of Ordinances to the, of the Lexington, Fayette Urban County Government, to eliminate the registration requirement, amending Section 18C-3 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for the maintenance of the insurance as required by law, amending subsection 18C-4, subsection 1 of the Code of Ordinances, to add that the ambulance service provider be appropriately authorized by the Commonwealth of Kentucky to provide service within Fayette County, repealing and deleting from section 18C-8 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to permit registration in its entirety, amending section 18C-9 to add Fayette County and the Kentucky Board of Emergency Medical Services, or any other state agency tasked with regulating these services, and renumbering the sections of 18, chapters 18C of the Code of Ordinances accordingly, all effective upon date of passage. Number three, an ordinance amending section 21-52 of the Code of Ordinances, abolishing one position of administrative officer grade 118E and creating one position of Human Resources Generalist grade 118E, all in the Division of Human Resources.
Madam Clerk, if you would hold on for just a moment. Councilmember Martin.
I have a motion at the administration's request. I move to amend item number four under second reading ordinances to delete all references to bargaining unit employees. Pay increases for bargaining unit employees are covered under their respective collective bargaining agreements. This is not a material change and does not require a new first reading. So moved.
I have a motion to Councilmember Martin and a second to Councilmember Ellinger to amend item number four specified. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number four, as amended, an ordinance amending sections 21-25, 20-22, 22-52, 22-53.2, and 23-28 of the Code of Ordinances, providing a 1 percent structure movement of the salary schedules applicable to classified civil service employees, unclassified civil service employees, including council staff, and traffic school cards, and a 1 percent increase to the maximum of the pay range of program assistant part-time, providing that all classified and unclassified civil service employees, except seasonal employees in account 332, and Division of Parks and Recreation employees in accounts 333 and 334, who receive a satisfactory score on their performance evaluation pursuant to sections 21-29D and 22-265 of the Code of Ordinances, shall receive a 1 percent pay increase. Amending section 23-32D of the Code of Ordinances, modifying the existing step structure for the positions of police chief grade 324E and fire chief grade 324E, increasing the salary by 1 percent of one position of friend of the court grade 000 within the office of the circuit judges, one position of ABC administrator part-time grade 000 within the office of alcoholic beverage control, three positions of law clerk part-time grade 000 within the Department of Law, and three positions of skilled trades worker part-time grade 000 within the Division of Community Corrections, all to become effective retroactive to June 22, 2009. Number five, an ordinance relating to stormwater discharges from high-risk industrial and high-risk commercial facilities, amending subsections 16-1F2, 16-1F3, 16-1F9, 16-1F15, and 16-1F16 of the Code of Ordinances to redefine terms, creating subsections 16-1F16 and subsections 16-1F18 through 16-1F48 of the Code of Ordinances, defining terms, creating subarticle of Article 10 of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances, sections 16-89 through 1691, to ensure adequate control of stormwater where high-risk industrial and high-risk commercial facilities are located, requiring a high-risk industrial facility to submit a copy of its KPDES permit and stormwater pollution prevention plan to the Division of Water Quality, requiring other industrial facilities to submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan to the Division and specifying requirements thereof, requiring submission of monitoring program results to the Division and allowing the Urban County Government to require monitoring programs as part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, requiring high-risk commercial facilities to develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan within 90 days of notice by the Division, specifying the requirements thereof, and authorizing the Urban County Government to require monitoring programs as part of a stormwater pollution prevention plan, authorizing the Urban County Government to develop general permits for industrial and commercial facilities that are not required to be covered under the KPDES permit, authorizing the Division to require best management practices or stormwater controls for any industrial, commercial, or institutional activity, operation, or facility that may contribute to pollution of stormwater, creating subarticle D of Article 10 of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances, section 16-92 through 16-98, relating to illicit connections and illicit discharges, prohibiting illicit discharges to the MS4 with certain exceptions, prohibiting illicit connections to the MS4, authorizing suspension of access to the MS4 when such action is necessary to stop a discharge which presents or may present imminent and substantial danger to the environment or persons or to the MS4, requiring remedial plans to eliminate an illicit connection or illicit discharge, requiring persons to maintain water courses free of pollution, contamination, or unreasonable obstruction, and requiring notification to the Division of release of materials which are resulting in or may result in illicit discharges.
Madam Clerk, I think the system's back up now.
Yes, sir, it is. I'll get on board here and we'll go to that.
If everyone hits the agenda button, it should pop up.
Okay, number six. Now let me get on task with switching where it goes. Okay, ordinance number six, an ordinance relating to solid waste collection, solid waste disposal, sanitary sewers, and stormwater, amending section 16-1C and 16-1G of the Code of Ordinances, defining terms, amending section 16-2 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the Commissioner of Public Works with the Commissioner of Environmental Quality. Replacing, repealing sections 16-3.1 and 16-3.2 of the Code of Ordinances, amending section 16-4 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the Commissioner of Public Works with the Commissioner of Environmental Quality, replace the Division Director of Solid Waste with the Director of Waste Management, and clarify enforcement actions, amending section 16-4.1 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the Director of Solid Waste with the Director of Waste Management, to provide that dumpsters or screening placed without a permit shall be removed within 48 hours unless a permit is immediately obtained, setting the fee for such permit at $100, providing that no permitted dumpster shall be removed without notifying the Division of Waste Management at least 48 hours before, and clarifying enforcement actions, amending section 16-8 of the Code of Ordinances to clarify enforcement actions, amending section 16-10 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the Director of Solid Waste with the Director of Waste Management, replace the Commissioner of Public Works with the Commissioner of Environmental Quality, and clarify enforcement actions, repealing sections 16-18 through 16-28 inclusive of the Code of Ordinances, recreating sections 16-18 and 16-19 of the Code of Ordinances, to require persons disposing of or managing solid waste within Fayette County to obtain required permits and comply with permit terms. Amending section 16-40 of the Code of Ordinances to clarify enforcement actions, amending section 16-44 of the Code of Ordinances relating to grease and oil interceptors, to add requirements that a site map, designed documents, and as-built drawings be submitted to the Division of Water Quality, clarify permit provisions, and transfer approval authority to the Division of Water Quality, amending section 16-44.1 of the Code of Ordinances relating to special grease and oil interceptors, to replace the Director of Sanitary Sewers with the Director of Water Quality, and clarify enforcement actions, and amending section 16-46 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the Director of Sanitary Sewers with the Director of Water Quality, and clarifying enforcement actions, amending section 16-49 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the Director of Sanitary Sewers with the Director of Water Quality, repealing sections 16-73, 16-74, and 16-75 of the Code of Ordinances, amending section 16-74.1 of the Code of Ordinances by renumbering it as section 16-94.1, creating Article 12 of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances relating to civil fines and enforcement, to provide enforcement responses, actions of informal notice, notice of violation, civil citations, and administrative orders, including an order to appear before the Director of Waste Management or Water Quality, and a compliance order, or a cease and desist order, providing specific requirements for issuance of notices of violations, NOVs, and providing that an NOV shall precede issuance of a civil citation except in cases of serious threats to the public or environment, potential imperable effects, or repeat offenders, providing specific requirements for issuance of civil citations, and providing a right to a hearing before environmental or infrastructure hearing board of the citation is contested, if the citation is contested within seven days, providing for service of NOVs, administrative orders, and citation by personal service or regular mail, and providing for a copy to be sent to the property owner, providing that civil fines may be issued for failure to perform duties under or violation of Chapter 16, providing that the maximum civil fine that may be imposed is $15,000, and each day in violation shall be a separate offense, providing that a citation shall specify the amount of the fine, and that two-thirds of the fine specified will be imposed if the violator does not contest the citation and has complied with applicable administrative orders, providing that persons who hold a permit under Chapter 16 may be issued a stop-work order for violation of the permit or the provisions of Chapter 16, where there is a threat to the public or property, and providing for appeal to Fayette District Court specifying the rights of appeal of civil citations, and providing that failure to appeal shall represent a determination that a violation has been committed and finally adjudicated, providing for appeal to the Fayette District Court of decisions of the administrative hearing boards, providing that violators shall become liable to the Urban County Government for its expenses occasioned by the violation, and that violators shall be responsible for repairing or restoring any facility, natural outlet, or stream that is damaged by the violation, providing that the Urban County Government may pursue equitable relief in court when necessary, and may abate the conditions and change the violator and charge the violator an administrative fee of $250 and the cost of abatement, providing that the authorized enforcement agency may enter on private property if necessary to abate a violation, providing for filing of a lien for the Urban County Government costs, providing that the Urban County Government may enter and inspect construction sites and facilities subject to regulation under Chapter 16 to determine compliance, providing that legal action may be instituted by the Urban County Government for the recovery of penalties and costs, including attorney's fees and court costs, providing that the violations of Chapter 16 are a public nuisance, providing that knowing or wanton violators may be subject to criminal prosecution, providing that no building permit will be granted to a person adjudicated in violation of Chapter 16 unless an appropriate consent order and compliance schedule has been entered into with the Division of Environmental Policies, creating subsection 5-88I of the Code of Ordinances, providing that a contractor must certify that it has not been adjudicated in violation of Chapter 16 before being registered to act as a contractor within Fayette County, creating subsection 5-9E of the Code of Ordinances, providing that before renewal of registration contractors must certify that all information provided remains accurate, and creating subsection 5-98A6 of the Code of Ordinances, providing that the registration of a contractor may be suspended or revoked for violation of any provision of Chapter 16. Number seven, an ordinance amending section 14-10F of the Code of Ordinances to clarify citation authority for enforcement of Chapter 16 of the Code of Ordinances. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $86,168 federal funds, are for the Project Safe Neighborhoods Program for the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Kentucky, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 23, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
Madam Clerk, I think Councilmember Lawless wished to address item number nine.
I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you. It's number 14 I wanted to address. I read it wrong.
Sorry.
Ordinance number nine. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $1,394,105 federal funds, under the 2009 Recovery Act Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Grant Assistance Program for the purchase and installation of various types of equipment for the Division of Police to establish a full-time, three-year civilian unclassified position for the Computer Information Systems Unit of the Division of Police, a full-time social worker unclassified position for the offender reentry program at the Division of Community Corrections, an assistant prosecutor position in the Fayette County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, a gang coordinator position in the Fayette County Attorney's Office, and an extradition coordinator in the Fayette County Sheriff's Office, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 24, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 10, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of $15,000 federal funds, are for participation in blue lights across the Bluegrass for the Division of Police, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 25, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 11, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Education, Division of School and Community Nutrition, to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $62,000 federal funds, are for participation in the Child Care Food Program for the operation of the nutrition program at the Family Care Center in FY 2010, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 26, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 12, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Education to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $35,500 in federal funds and Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, are for the National School Lunch Program 2010, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 27, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 13, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington, Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating or reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 28.
Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you, Mayor. This is about the South Limestone Streetscape Construction Bid, authorizing the mayor to sign that. It's receiving second reading tonight, and I was wondering, can I ask a question? Commissioner Webb, or somebody, Mr. Milligan, is it?
While he's coming up, let me address one thing that you mentioned earlier this afternoon, and you had expressed some concern about the communication with the folks in the area. This afternoon, I signed an executive order that's going to create a commission of folks who have businesses along the South Limestone Corridor to work with us during the course of the construction, assuming tonight goes well, so that we'll try to keep the communications issues to a minimum.
Okay, because I've been getting a lot of calls, and nobody from the city has talked to the individual business owners, and so they don't know when things are going to start, when their section's going to be done. Lots of frustration because of the way this whole thing transpired. So when are they going to start talking with them individually, and when are they going to have a schedule of this section's going to be closed approximately from here to, you know, this date to this date, et cetera?
We are preparing to send out a notice based on how the vote goes tonight. We'll walk the corridor tomorrow, probably late in the day, with notices of a meeting. We're going to provide two times on Friday. I believe it's 1:00 or 1:30, 1:05 and 1:30 over at the Phoenix Building. So we will walk those through the corridor and do the very best job we can getting hold of the property owners. We have some email addresses. We have some phone numbers. But to get this first meeting off the ground, we may miss some of the property owners because we just can't reach them. But we'll be providing information to those folks at those meetings. Wanted to give them two opportunities to attend those meetings. We are working with, we had a preliminary meeting with the Transportation Cabinet this morning to discuss the encroachment permits that are required for each of the intersections, and getting that worked to them, and what we would need to do in order to go ahead and close those intersections. So if everything works properly, we would be able to discuss when the closure could happen on Friday.
So could you email me and let me know when those meetings are going to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'd like for you to attend.
Huh?
We'd like for you to attend.
Okay.
And also, if I could, just in the communications plan, contractor has committed to a weekly meeting with any stakeholders on the block that are willing to attend, and I really appreciate the effort of getting together a dedicated commission to be a part of that communication. That helps, folks that don't have an opportunity may miss a meeting, or may think that there's something not going on. It will help us get the word out and to address issues. So I think that'll work very well.
The other question I had was, this $13 million and change for this, does this, this doesn't include the wiring, the utility wiring, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. There's some additional cost in the utilities wiring up the conduit.
Isn't that like over a million dollars, if I remember correctly?
That's what the estimate is currently.
And then on top of that is the Streetscape benches and whatnot.
There is an amenities package that was not bid as part of this contract, and that we were actually eligible for a TE grant for that, which would be, if we qualify, would be awarded in the fall for that.
I still have really grave concerns, both about, and I hope that moving forward on other projects, that the council will know before the public knows, and that, you know, I've had several calls about Mill Street closing, and I said, they said, "Well, you know, where is it?" And I said, "Well, I don't know." And they said, "Well, you'll know about it before." And I said, "Well, I don't know." So once again, my concerns are cost, and if there has been enough done on the front end, and the lack of involvement, and I know this hadn't been, this isn't directed at you, Commissioner Webb, at all, but the lack of communication both with the public and with the council before this went out for bid and fast-tracked in. So those are my comments, and thank you very much. And again, it wasn't directed at you at all. Thank you.
On the Mill Street issue, keep in mind, there is nothing within Urban County Government focused on Mill Street right now. That's all issues that have been raised by private individuals. So to the extent constituents have questions about that, you can direct them to the individuals. Councilmember Beard.
Mike, if I might, why are the two numbers different? We have $13 million, 146, and $14 million, 261 roughly.
That, if I could defer to Bill O'Meara, but I believe that is, that is a difference in the total budget and money that is already available in a reimbursement resolution for Streetscape projects.
Here comes Bill. But don't go away, because I haven't really got to the question I want to ask you yet.
Okay.
I've just come up to confirm. I believe that is correct. We're talking about the total budget versus the amount of this actual purchase order.
Okay, well, you know, when we were looking at this, we were talking about approving the bid and the $13 million, and then all of a sudden it's escalated now another 9%.
So. What we're trying to make sure is that the budget was approved to cover this bid, and so we made sure that the budget was authorized equal to or greater than the amount of the purchase order. Yes, sir.
Okay, was that done some time ago? Because all I remember seeing is the $13 million recently.
I would defer to Elizabeth on memory, but it came before council. I don't remember the date.
I don't believe I have the specific information with me in my file, but part of it was previously approved in prior fiscal years. I believe part of it is in the 2010 bond package that you all approved as part of the budget. But I have that listing, and I can provide it to you.
Well, it just looked strange when you had two different numbers going to the same person and...
Well, the budget amendment is for the project as a whole. This $13 million amount is just for this portion of the bid, and this way, when we accept other bids related to the same project, we don't have to do a budget amendment every time.
Kind of like a change order on the front end rather than the tail end.
Correct. I mean, you'll have to approve how the money is spent, you know, if we do a change order or accept a bid for another company, but the money at that point would be in place.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Mike, back to this communication question. Have you talked to anybody from Bank of the Bluegrass?
Yes, we have.
You have? Because at one point, nobody had. Because at one point, nobody had.
Yeah, we, actually, one of the above-ground structures for KU will be on their property, and we have been working with them on that.
Well, they, you know, their big concern, I think, probably is their drive-in windows.
Yes.
And they're, you know, they're at 101 High Street, so they got no notice.
I can't stand here and tell you that that's not correct, that you're correct there.
Well, that's just what I was told.
Yeah.
I mean, I can see how that could happen, technically could happen, but.
In the discussions that we've had with them concerning the construction and the placement of a transformer on their property, they've been very supportive. And I don't know when, when the notices that they didn't get versus the communications we've had as we work through the transformer issues with the property owners.
Councilmember Beard, we had a physical meeting with the President and Mrs. Jett approximately a week and a half ago. We did discuss the lane closure down there and the fact that, and have basically agreed on a plan to keep at least one of their drive-through lanes open at all times. Part of it is the transformer that's going to serve them is actually going to sit on their property on the backside. And we've also discussed with them some other safety precautions because of, they have a tendency to attract vehicles into the front of their building and some, putting in some safety ballers to protect that part of the building.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I've discovered in the last two and a half years why, what was first puzzling to me, why we have a first and second reading. And one of those reasons is that it gives you time to reflect and think about things, especially significant projects and significant undertakings like this. You know, what I've also discovered is that we bring our experience to these roles. We bring our head to these roles. And over the weekend, we had the Fourth of July celebration downtown, which caused me to think about this project. And it caused me to disabuse myself of the notion that I was going to be able to vote for it tonight. And why is that? My head tells me that there's three things that aren't right about the project. The process, the priority, and the price. The process and the priority lead to the price. And in my view, the price, the system that we're using, the structure that we're using is not appropriate, and that we're shoehorning ourselves into this project. We've learned in the, since I've been on the council anyway, we've learned that, or my experience since being on the council, is that the council's role is to advise and And the word "council," and C-O-U-N-C-I-L and C-O-U-N-S-E-L, it's pronounced the same, but sometimes doesn't occur. And earlier, I said that there are three, three things that I can't reconcile. One is the process, and earlier I talked about that, my own experience, that this is a very unusual contracting method for an underground utilities project, design bill. And so that, I struggled with that. And I struggle with the priority. How did this project, that was first estimated at $9 million, is now $13 million and arguably going to be $15 or $16 million? How did that become the first priority? And what effect is that going to have on the critical mass of work that has been identified as critically important to the downtown? That is, especially the area around Cheapside, around the old courthouse and Main and Vine. And how does that relate? And how was that priority established? Now, there's something that occurred last week in our Economic Development Task Force. There was a lot of free-flowing conversation about tough issues. All of these issues, even though they may look flat-footed and pedestrian to outsiders, we realize that they become tough issues. The economic development issues that we're addressing are. And in my view, this one is too, because we're putting a lot at stake here. If this project creeps, the budget on it continues to become greater, then we risk cannibalizing the other projects and compromising the credibility. And the only thing that is still puzzling to me, not the only thing, but one of the things that's still puzzling to me is why this was established as the priority. Now, the only rumor that I have heard is that some time ago, Mayor, that you had a meeting, a council on mayors or the Mayor's Institute on Urban Planning, where this was an exercise. And I think that it is appropriate, if that became the priority and it occurred then, to share that with us. If that's when the connection from the university to the downtown became the priority. Is that when it occurred?
Yeah, I am delighted to have the opportunity to talk about this, because there has been so much misinformation generated that you got to only conclude that it is to the point of being intentional. I mean, we have talked about college town in this community since 2002, when a lot of money was spent on the Air Saint Grace proposal, suggesting that we needed to tie downtown to the campus much more aggressively than what they have. Well, that's why we hired Cleet and KKG a year and a half, two years ago. They came out with a whole proposal. That's why in February, we talked about Phase One, all of the parts of Phase One needing to be implemented ASAP. That included Limestone, that included Main Street, that included Vine Street, and included the Cheapside area. Now, when you got those four pieces, how are you going to get it done? The most complicated piece is the one we've been talking about tonight, by far and away. So if we're going to get it done in a timely fashion, we got to get started with the most complicated piece first. That's why it is a priority. Yes, I talked about the need to more closely link the University of Kentucky campus with downtown in a meeting in 2007, but that was hardly a novel idea. How long have we been talking about that in this community? I don't think there was any news arising from that. So when you talk about the priority, yeah, this is the first priority in the Phase One project that was identified in February when you were there, and we had all kinds of positive feedback from everybody all over the place about how important it was for us to move forward with these streetscapes. There was no debate. We all went to Madison. How many times did we hear people say, "We got to quit talking and start doing"? Well, now we get to the point where we're ready to start doing. And we have all these concerns about priority. Now, I'm not going to say that there couldn't have been a better job communicating with people along the way, but I will say this, communication is a two-way street. And folks have an obligation to show up and inquire when we start talking about putting new improvements in front of their business. And many did, and many liked it. And, you know, tonight, when we look out, I don't see a vast array of folks from the South Limestone Street Corridor present to complain about how we are proposing to move forward. I think a lot of it had to do with the fact that until June 19th, I believe it was, when we opened the bids, we didn't have a specific proposal about when we're going to start, how long it's going to take, whether or not we would even be able to do the project, whether or not there'd be any qualified bidders. Now, we got a couple of folks that submitted bids. They were within $70,000, $75,000 of each other. One of the reasons the bid was markedly higher than estimated is because we told the contractors, "We want to compress the period of time here. We don't want to have Limestone Street blocked indefinitely. We want to get in. We want to get out. We want the businesses to have the opportunity to get back to normal operating conditions as promptly as possible. We are paying a premium." I think in talking with the contractors, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's about a million, million and a half.
I think Jim Gray got ahold of them also.
So we are paying extra dollars to get this project done faster. If the council thinks we need to extend it, and I think they said over two building seasons, construction seasons.
I actually went to engineering. They typically set a timeframe for this type of construction, road construction and sewer projects, and sat down, had a good conversation with them about what would the normal time limit for a project like this be with this much construction underground? And what they told me was two construction seasons or basically two years. That doesn't include the water line going in, which we have a commitment to get that into.
So we asked the contractors, when we put the bid out on the street, to compress the timeframe so that we would get in and out of the area as promptly as we could, so that motorists wouldn't have their access to Limestone Street impaired. And we're paying a premium. I think that's an appropriate premium to minimize the inconvenience for everybody that's involved. Now, yeah, we can go back and we can rebid it, and we can have more detailed engineering drawings. And I think we went back and talked with the engineers, and that would probably save us $300,000 or $400,000 maybe. It's going to add some additional engineering costs, but the point of it is, we can get in, we can get out, we can find a way to do some things people in this community have been talking about forever, like replacing sanitary sewers, like replacing storm sewers, like burying aerial utilities, like creating a more pedestrian-friendly thoroughfare, like installing bike lanes, like finding a way to bring the university and the downtown area closer together. For me, that's a pretty high priority in this community. And I think we have a, by your own admission, a first-class contractor capable of getting it done in a timely fashion with experienced people who have been involved not only in similar urban projects like this, but specifically in dealing with streetscape access issues. And I agree with what we heard in Madison. I think it is time for us to stop talking and start doing.
Let me, it's okay if I comment. First, I'd like to say that this, I'm encouraged by the conversation because it's really the first conversation about this significant project in a meaningful way that we've really had. Now, I understand when you say that we've talked about it, but we have not had the conversation about the priorities, which still exist, and a budget. That issue still exists. Now, all I've said, or what I've said is that, and what I've thought about over the weekend is simply, would I do this if it were my business? And I wouldn't, for the reasons that I've expressed. Now, others may, and that's fully okay. But with the experience that I have in my own work and translating that into this job, I don't see it that way. I don't see it as that we have this either-or proposition. And I'm very uncomfortable that we only had two bids and that they're so much higher than our estimate. And that's just really a matter of point of view, and I don't, you know, I've seen lots of projects where it's like, oh, do or die, we've got to start immediately. And somehow or another, we muddle through in a better-than-muddle-through way because we do planning better. And, you know, this does take us back to more than two and a half years ago, when we were talking, have been the discussion about project management, about these issues that keep coming up and that we need to address. But on this project, as it stands today, I simply think we could do better and that there's a lot at stake, and that's why we're having this conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawless.
Thank you, Mayor. I too appreciate the dialogue. I'm all for paying a premium to get it done as quickly as possible. But what I know is the business owners, there was a meeting on June 3rd, and it was, the notice was, "We need to find out about your utility needs." And that's, that, there was nothing on there about streetscape. And what I've found over and over, if you're talking about putting in a stop sign, or you're talking about H1, or Center Point, or anything else, open dialogue, communication, engaging the public, engaging the council and the stakeholders beforehand is the way to do it well. And I hope, if this goes forward, and again, I am 100% for the streetscape improvements, I'm for this project. What I'm not, what I'm hoping is that we, however this falls out today, that people are engaged in a transparent and open way very early on. And they weren't, and the business owners weren't in this case. And how would you know if you got a notice, a flyer, that says, "We're going to have a meeting assessing your utility needs," that that meant, "Oh, and we're tearing up the street for a year." So, you know, they weren't engaged, and it was, whenever the bid went out, it was the day after the bid went out that a constituent who doesn't own the property but owns the business called me, and I didn't know anything about it. And we just need to do better about engaging people early on in these processes, because that, it will make or break the community will to move forward and their buy-in and their engagement. And so, you know, and misinformation, they were being told, "There'll be one lane of traffic open." And Harold Tate said that to me, he said it to them, he said it in writing, and then, "Oh, well, to emergency vehicles." Well, if you raise expectations, then, you know, you get in trouble. And the reason that they're not here tonight is because they're working. You know, these are very small businesses, and they're working, and they're scared to death that their entire livelihood is going to go down the tubes. So we need to support these businesses, everybody out there. We need to get up on a website, what they are, how to get to them. You know, we're paying a premium for traffic management, but I just wish that whenever January, February, whenever it was decided this was going to be done and start digging two weeks later, that we had engaged everybody in that and brought everybody up to speed. I think it would have gone a lot smoother, and people would feel a lot better about it. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a comment, maybe more so. I wish the 7th District were part of the streetscape plan when it came to the utility work. I'd invite everybody maybe to drive out to Maple Leaf. We had some sewer work done out there. I think it ended early April, and I would just like for maybe everybody to take note that just today, I noticed them working on the sidewalks that had been torn up, and there's still fences that are torn up from that. sidewalks that had been torn up, and there's still fences that are torn up from that work. So, that's just my concern, is that, you know, we say we have a timeline and that things are going to get done, but, you know, being outside, not in the downtown area, or part of a streetscape plan, that oftentimes, we say that we're going to be able to get things done in a timely manner that really might affect a business, or in our case, people who have townhomes along this area. And even though it was wonderful, you got the road open and repaved, and that looks wonderful, the actual corner is a disaster, it's a mess. It looks pretty horrible when you look at it. That's how I pull out of my neighborhood every day, and you look at that corner, and it's still pretty much a mess from where they had it torn up for several weeks. So, that's just my main concern, but, you know, on the other side, I do understand that we need to be doing these projects and upgrading our utilities. So, that's where I just get very torn, when I see projects like this and how it affects people in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm probably going to continue the conversation you started concerning Air St. Gross and the College Town Plan, because limestone is the western boundary of the university. And if we're talking about targeting the majority of where the students live and where most of the activity is, that linkage ought to happen along Rose Street, not limestone. Actually, the easiest way to do it at all would be to go Martin Luther King as a linkage because of very little impediments along those, that corridor. You know, and, you know, everybody's got their own ideas about those types of things. Hopefully someday, we'll have all three corridors busy with UK students and faculty coming to downtown. But this situation, again, I'll have to go along with what Councilmember Lawless says, those folks can't stand one month of downtime, let alone four months of downtime, or four and a half, whatever the number is now. So, I don't know what we'll have to do. Hopefully, we can marshal some help, as you suggest, Councilmember Lawless, but from the public, and what we can do to keep some business flowing their way. But we must do something, because it would be, it would be pretty silly to have this beautiful streetscape and nothing but empty buildings along it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Feigl.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say that sitting in this seat has got to be very difficult for, well, all of us. I'm sitting here tonight, hearing some of the same statements that I tried to make, but Vice Mayor Gray made them far more eloquently, talking about process, priority, and price. And those were the very issues that I brought up about, the sidewalks on Tate's Creek Road. Those were the very concerns, much smaller project. But if, in fact, we do have a problem, a systemic problem with communicating with the folks in our community, then we need to do something about that. I really feel like that this is, this project needs to go forward. I think that it's going to inconvenience businesses, no matter if it's going to be on limestone, or on vine, or main, or wherever. It's going to be an inconvenience to the visitors, I mean, to the businesses. And it will be the same inconvenience to these particular business owners, whether we do this project first or whether we do it last. The one good thing that I see in this project at this point is that we do have a deadline. And I think that deadline will help us move this project forward in a very effective way. And without the deadline, it probably would drag on forever and ever, and those businesses would probably be hurt far worse than they might be hurt this time. So, I don't know that moving this project to a different location is going to make any difference at all. I just feel like that we need to start and work within the deadline that we have for the 2010 games, and follow through on this college-town approach. So, I'm in support of this project, just because I feel like it really isn't going to be any easier to do it later than it is now. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, Councilmember Lawless had made a statement about only one lane being open for emergency vehicles. Is there going to be, I'm confused. I thought there'd be one lane open for access, for traffic, for everybody, or is it just going to be open for just emergency vehicles?
During the, during the first phase of the project, and that's during the undergrounding of the utilities, there, it will be closed to all but local traffic. Deliveries will be able to get through. We'll keep a dedicated lane for the hospital. We actually met with the hospital yesterday. We knew that early on, that we would need to do that from meetings that we had with stakeholders on the corridor, but it will not have a through lane of traffic during the undergrounding, the sewer work and the conduit work.
And how long will that be?
That approximately till November 15th, I believe, is the target for that.
And if this ordinance doesn't pass tonight, then what? What's our fallback plan here?
If this ordinance doesn't pass tonight, I think because of the break that you all have, we probably lose the opportunity to do the project before July, and have it complete by July of next year.
Okay, thank you.
We asked for detailed chart, charting of the different construction pieces and information on how it would be done. Project will actually start from both ends and work towards the middle. That's how sewer projects were done. And I would remind folks that whenever we first started meeting with people on the corridor, we were not aware that we would have to do this type of sewer work. So, they very well could have been communicated that, yeah, they'll do one side, the sidewalk improvements, and then the other. We did not know that we had this level of construction with our first meetings.
Councilmember Lawless.
This is probably the hardest decision I've had to make since I've been on council. And again, tremendous support for the streetscape and for this particular project. I've waffled back and forth every day, several times, on how I'm going to vote on it. And I think after this conversation, I'm going to vote yes. And the reason I'm going to vote yes is because if we stop this, the council's going to be blamed for it not going forward. And the mayor has expressed great confidence that it will be done as painlessly as possible. He has stated that it will be done by July 1, and that he is confident that he will get the money for the other streetscape projects in Phase 1 by July of 2010, before the games. So, I'm going to trust his commitment and his confidence in that, and I'm going to vote yes. But I'm also going to request that when these things start being planned and bid documents going out, that the council be informed and the stakeholders be informed before any more projects like this. I just don't want another situation where I either read about it in the paper, or I find out from a constituent, and that people feel left out of the process. So, on your commitment, Mayor Newberry, and giving full faith and credit to your confidence that you will be able to secure the money for this and the other Phase 1 projects, and that they will all be done by July of 2010, I am going to vote yes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gray.
Let me ask a question. Let me ask a question. Does that include the pavilion?
It is my understanding from Thursday.
On Cheepside?
That the pavilion on Cheepside was part of Phase 1, and the pictures we saw, and that was part of the commitment. Is that right, Mayor?
Well, a pavilion, yes. Whether it looks like that, not necessarily.
Right, we understood those were.
Conceptual.
Right.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. And we'll also be having our Wayfinder project, so that's pretty exciting, too.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 14, an ordinance accepting the bid of LM Asphalt Partners Limited Doing Business As ATS Construction in the amount of thirteen million, one hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and nineteen cents for the Lexington Streetscape Phase 1 Improvement, South Limestone Street, for the Department of Public Works and Development, authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with LM Asphalt Partners Limited Doing Business As ATS Construction related to the bid and appropriating funds in the amount of fourteen million, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars pursuant to Schedule Number 29. Number 15, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept the grant from the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of fourteen thousand, thirty-five dollars Commonwealth of Kentucky funds under the Kentucky Recycling and Household Hazardous Waste Grant Program, offer support of a partnership with Lexington Habitat for Humanity to establish a program to collect bulk and resell leftover latex-based paint to generate revenue and reduce hazardous landfill-bound waste, acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars as a local match to be provided in kind by the Lexington Habitat for Humanity, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 30, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 16, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet, which grant funds are in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars Commonwealth of Kentucky funds under the Kentucky Household Hazardous Waste Management Grant Program, offer the support of a one-day household hazardous waste recycling event, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 31, and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget.
All right. Did you read? Number 17.
Wishful thinking, I guess. I was thinking it would be, sorry. Number 17, an ordinance permitting certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for animal control and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 32.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane.
Mayor, I'd like to request that we vote on ordinance number 14 separately from the balance of the ordinances.
All right, I'll take that as a motion to approve item number 14. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Feigl. Any further discussion? Councilmember Martin.
I just want to say briefly, I don't know whether all these projects can get done by next summer or not, but I'm voting in favor of this, because I think this project stands on its own.
Can't explain your vote during the vote. He's already made a motion.
This is a motion to approve and second it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's during.
Oh, we're voting on this.
She's already read them.
All right.
That's what the rule, I'm just, we've already violated the rules like 10 times tonight, so, I mean, if you go ahead, I mean, I'm just trying to move it forward.
We read ordinances all the time and have, okay.
It's, it's.
It was read as a motion to approve the.
The motion is to approve item number 14. All right.
Which requires a roll call vote.
So, this is a motion to bifurcate, is that right, Mayor? Okay. I'll hold my comment until we vote on it then. Thank you.
Okay. My understanding was, we had the motion to approve one item, that being number 14 that was on the floor right now. I'll stand corrected.
Separate.
All right. So, you want to vote on items 1 through 13 and 15 through 17 now?
Separate.
All right. Then, the preference is to move to separate the vote, and, so, the motion is to separate the vote. Any further discussion on that? Those then in favor of separating the vote, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All right, let's vote electronically. Madam Clerk, the motion, the question on the floor is to bifurcate, so is to vote separately on number 14. I see the motion carries by vote of eight to four. Now, we're prepared to vote separately, and we'll take number 14 separately, and we're prepared to vote. Correct? All right, Madam Clerk, or Councilmember Martin.
I have a short statement, Mayor. I was just going to say, I don't know whether all these projects can get done, there's enormous number of things that can happen between now and next summer on all the projects, but I think this project stands on its own. I think it's going to be a good thing for the limestone corridor, and clearly, there have been enormous number of attention, meetings and attention to this project, and I think it's, it will be a waste of all this effort to put this off. We'll have to reset and do it again. So, I just want to say that I support this on its own, and I guess we'll hit the other ones when they come across. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Just no further debate, we'll proceed to vote on number 14. Those in favor of approving ordinance number 14, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, voting nay electronically. Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the motion to approve ordinance number 14.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Feigl, second by Councilmember Ellinger to approve item number 14.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to vote, if you can set the machine for us. Those in favor, please vote aye electronically, those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger, Ms. Feigl, Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
O.
Ms. James. Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless. Mr. Martin. Mr. Stenit. Mr. Beard.
A reluctant yes.
Mr. Blues. And Ms. Crosby.
Thank you. That motion is approved by a vote of 11 to 1. The floor is, Mr. Parliamentarian, Vice Mayor Gray wants to know if he can explain his vote now.
No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve items 1 through 13?
Move to approve.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Lane, and a second by a cast of thousands, I think is Councilmember Martin. Those, any discussion on those issues? Then, those in favor of approving items 1 through 13 and 15 through 17, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, voting nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger. Ms. Feigl. Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Stenit. Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
Ms. Crosby. Thank you.
Thank you. Those ordinances are approved unanimously. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the ordinance entitled a first reading.
Ordinance number 18, an ordinance permitting articles 27-6D and 27-7 of the zoning ordinance to delay the issuance of demolition permits in the courthouse design area overlay zone and to stay all work once an appeal to the Planning Commission has been filed until after the hearing before the Planning Commission. Number 19, an ordinance permitting section 21-52 of the Code of Ordinances of Reallocating One Position of Director of Streets, Roads, and Forestry from Grade 121E to Grade 123E in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry and Appropriating Funds pursuant to Schedule Number 33. Number 20, an ordinance closing a portion of Leader Avenue, determining that all property owners abutting the portion of the street to be closed have been identified, provided with written notice of the proposed closing and consented thereto in writing, and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute acquitclaim deed, transferring the former right-of-way to the abutting owner, subject to the reservation of easements for access and maintenance of existing utilities in the former right-of-way. 21, an ordinance permitting certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette County Government to establish a six million dollars in bond fund budget for the Lyric Theater project as approved at the Lexington Fayette County Council Meeting on July 2, 2009, and by reimbursement resolution on March 12, 2009, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 34. 22, an ordinance permitting certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette County Government to provide funds for purchase orders rolling from FY 2009 into FY 2010, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 35. Number 23. An ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of four hundred dollars for the Division of Parks and Recreation from neighborhood development funds for the EST Roach Basketball, Cheerleaders, T-shirts and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number Thirty-six. And number twenty-four. An ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements in... For municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number Thirty-seven.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to add an ordinance for a budget amendment to reappropriate six thousand dollars for a copier for the Division of Youth Services. These funds were approved by ordinance zero-eight slash two thousand and nine in May, two thousand and nine, and due to miscommunication, the Division did not purchase the copier before the end of FY two thousand and nine.
Motion to add that ordinance to the docket?
Yes, it is. So moved.
First reading. Do I hear a second? I have a second by Councilmember Gordon. Motion is... Councilmember Lawless. Okay. Hang on for just a second. Let's add that. Any discussion on the motion to add that item to the docket for a first reading? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of adding that item, please indicate by voting aye. Oppose no? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Number twenty-five. An ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of six thousand dollars for a copier for the Division of Youth Services and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number Thirty-eight.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Lawless.
Yes, I'd like to move to suspend the rules and have a second reading on number twenty, closing a portion of Leader Avenue. This is part of a project the University of Kentucky's doing, and they need to get that done before we get back from break. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Stenit has seconded the motion. Are there others? Councilmember Gordon.
Number eighteen, please, Mayor.
Thank you. There's no objection. We'll amend the ordinance accordingly, the motion accordingly. I believe all the rest of them are precluded, but we'll proceed to vote on those. To those in favor of suspending the rules for purposes of giving a second reading to items eighteen and twenty, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose no? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number eighteen for second reading. An ordinance amending Articles Twenty-seven dash six D and Twenty-seven dash seven of the zoning ordinance to delay the issuance of demolition permits in the courthouse design area overlay zone and to stay all work once an appeal to the Planning Commission has been filed until after the hearing before the Planning Commission. And number twenty. An ordinance closing a portion of Leader Avenue determining that all property owners abutting the portion of the street to be closed have been identified, provided with written notice of the proposed closing and consented thereto in writing and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute acquit claim deed, transferring the former right-of-way to the abutting owner subject to the reservation of easements for access and maintenance of existing utilities in the former right-of-way.
Is there a motion to approve items eighteen and twenty? I have a motion by Councilmember Beard and a second by Councilmember Blues, I think, to approve items eighteen and twenty. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger. Ms. Feigl. Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray. Ms. James. Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless. Mr. Martin. Mr. Stenit. Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
And Ms. Crosby.
Thank you. Those ordinances are approved. We're now ready for resolutions entitled a second reading. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number one. A resolution accepting the bid of ZKB Construction Services LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the roof installation at Tate's Creek Community Center for the Division of Parks and Recreation and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with ZKB Construction Services LLC related to the bid. Number two. A resolution accepting the bid of Allen Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars for roof replacement, Jordan Building, for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services. And there's a motion...
Thank you. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend item number three under second reading of resolutions to provide that Adana Angel requests a fifty-four day council-approved leave without pay from June twenty-ninth, two thousand and nine to August twenty-first, two thousand and nine. This is not a material change and does not require a new first reading.
Do I hear a second? Councilmember Feigl, I believe it was, second Councilmember Beard's motion. Any discussion? All in favor then of modifying item number three as specified, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Number three. A resolution as amended, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Dan Dietman, Environmental Compliance Coordinator, Grade One-nineteen E, two thousand two eighty-nine, twenty-eight, bi-weekly, in the Division of Environmental Policy, effective July sixth, two thousand and nine. Gregory Schaefer, Public Service Worker, Grade One-oh-six N, thirteen point two-eight-seven hourly, in the Division of Water Quality, effective July sixth, two thousand and nine. Approving leaves of absence for Pamela Moses, Personnel Record Supervisor, Grade One-fourteen E, in the Division of Police, requests a fifty-four day council-approved leave without pay... I'm sorry. Request a ninety day council-approved leave without pay from June seventeenth, two thousand and nine to September fourteenth, two thousand and nine. Our Donna Angel, Telecommunicator Senior, Grade One-thirteen N, in the Division of Emergency Management, nine-one-one, request a fifty-four day council-approved leave without pay from June twenty-nine, two thousand and nine through August twenty-one, two thousand and nine. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Anthony Snowden, Security Officer, Grade One-oh-six N, eleven point one sixty-one hourly, in the Department of General Services, effective June twenty-nine, two thousand and nine. Number four. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor, the Fire Chief and the Director, Division of Emergency Management, nine-one-one, on behalf of the Urban County Government and pursuant to KRS Chapter Thirty-nine F, to execute a statement of affiliation pertaining to the establishment and designation of the Urban County Government's Division of Fire and Emergency Services Special Operations Technical Rescue Team as the recognized rescue squad for the Fayette County at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number five. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Board of Trustees of the Lexington Public Library to provide a part-time staff position to serve as a community development coordinator at Gainesway Community Center at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number six. A resolution pursuant to Section Twenty-one dash sixteen B of the Code of Ordinances approving the continuation of the acting assignment pay increase of greater than ten percent for Mary Pfister, Director of Accounting, who will also be serving as the acting Director of Budgeting, effective July one, two thousand and nine. Number seven. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky American Water Company for the billing, accounting, and collecting of the water quality management fee at a cost not to exceed thirty-six point twenty-three cents per month for each account billed to be adjusted by the CPI dash U on July one, two thousand and eleven. Number eight. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management and to provide any additional information requested in connection...
We've lost a quorum. We need ten, do we not? We've got nine here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We need somebody back in the room. That makes nine. We need ten, I do believe. Thank you.
Okay, number eight. I'm going to start over again because I forgot where I was. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents federal funds and one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollar Commonwealth of Kentucky funds under the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and are for the acquisition and demolition of seven residential properties in the Fort Sumter Gale Drive area and the Parkside Chanted Cabot Drive area. Number nine. A resolution accepting the bid of Schroeder Construction Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars for the Haley Pike Landfill Leach Eight Pump Station upgrade for the Divisional Waste Management and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract agreement with Schroeder Construction Incorporated related to the bid. Number ten. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the property located at one forty-two Northwood Drive from James and Pamela Hopkins for the Northwood Drive Stormwater Project and authorizing payment in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number eleven. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a mutual aid agreement with Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board for mutual aid at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number twelve. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept Remo Tech Incorporated as a sole-source provider for Andros Hazardous Duty Robot Systems, including radio systems related to upgrades, accessories, parts, training, refurbishments, and services. Number thirteen. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an authorization with Selco Partnership for a site survey at Castlewood Park at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number fourteen. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Urban League of Lexington Fayette County for supportive initiatives designed to enable African-Americans and disadvantaged citizens to achieve social and economic quality at a cost not to exceed sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Number fifteen. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Road to Home Ownership Incorporated for the provision of educational programs to economically disadvantaged and low to moderate-income families at a cost not to exceed thirty-two thousand, sixty dollars. Number sixteen. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Lexington Fayette Human County... Lexington Fayette Urban County Human Rights Commission for purchase of services for FY two thousand and ten at a cost not to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. And number seventeen. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County... Directing the Department of Law to institute condemnation proceedings in Fayette Circuit Court to obtain permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements at one sixty-eight Beverly Avenue for the Beverly Avenue sanitary sewer project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stenit's moved approval of those resolutions. Councilmember Lane has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving those resolutions, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger. Ms. Feigl. Ms. Gordon. Mr. Gray. Ms. James. Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless. Mr. Martin. Mr. Stenit. Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blues. And Ms. Crosby. Thank you.
Thank you. Those resolutions are approved. Madam Clerk, if you would give first reading to the resolutions entitled a first reading.
Resolution number eighteen. A resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Mailing Services, establishing a price contract for mailing services for various departments and divisions of the Urban County Government. Number nineteen. A resolution accepting the bid of R&amp;L Cleaning Services, establishing a price contract for custodial services, Coleman House, for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number twenty. A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Charles Taylor, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade One-oh-nine N, twelve point eight-one-five hourly, in the Division of Water Quality, effective July twenty, two thousand and nine. Jamshed Barad, Deputy Director of Building Maintenance, Grade One-twenty-one E, three thousand, six hundred dollars bi-weekly, in the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management, effective July thirteen, two thousand and nine. Approving the probationary Community Corrections Officer Appointment of Angela Mullins, Probation Officer, Grade One-ten N, sixteen point oh-six-two hourly, in the Division of Community Corrections, effective July twentieth, two thousand and nine. Twenty-one. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a service agreement with the Lexington Fayette County Health Department for health data surveillance at no cost to the Urban County Government. Number twenty-two. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a service agreement with West Government Services for database access at a cost not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars. Twenty-three. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a sixth... The Sixth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Patricia K. Howard to serve as the Emergency Medical Services Training Coordinator for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty-four. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Juvenile Justice and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of eighteen thousand dollar federal funds under the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant Program and are for programs designed to promote greater accountability in the juvenile justice system. Twenty-five. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the Metropolitan Medical Response Systems Project through December thirty-first, two thousand and nine at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-six. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the World Equestrian Games All Hazards Disaster Preparedness Plan Project through November thirtieth, two thousand and nine at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-seven. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute purchase of service agreements with Baby Health Services, eighteen thousand dollars. Blue Big Brothers, Big Sisters, ten thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Bluegrass Community Action Council, thirty thousand dollars. Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program Incorporated, seventy-five thousand dollars. Bluegrass Rape Crisis Center, seventy-five thousand dollars. Bluegrass Technology Center Incorporated, three thousand dollars. Center for Women, Children, and Families, fifty thousand dollars. Chrisless House Incorporated, forty thousand dollars. Bluegrass Comprehensive Care Center, three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Community Action Council, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Hope Center Incorporated, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Mash Services of the Bluegrass Incorporated, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Movable Feast, Lexington, forty thousand dollars. Nursing Home Ombudsman Agency of the Bluegrass Incorporated, fifty thousand dollars. Salvation Army, two hundred thousand dollars, and Sunflower Kids, twenty-five thousand dollars to provide services to the public at a cost not to exceed two million, nine thousand and forty dollars. Number twenty-eight. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government and the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government Public Facilities Corporation to execute a deed and any other necessary documents to transfer property located at one twenty-five Cisco Road, also known as eleven thirty-five Red Mile Place, Lexington, Kentucky, from the Public Facilities Corporation to the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. Twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Port Royal Neighborhood Association Incorporated, five hundred dollars for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number thirty. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit an application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this application and the amount of fourteen million, six hundred thousand dollars for low-interest loans to facilitate the Lower Kane Run Pump Station and Expansion Area One projects.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a motion that needed to be made earlier today to walk on to the docket of resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, Climate Showcase Communities, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this application for upgrading aeration blowers and controls at the West Hickman and Town Branch Wastewater Treatment Plant. So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Stenit and a second by Councilmember Gordon to walk that item onto the agenda for tonight. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Madam Clerk.
There's, yeah, there's, do you want to do both walk-ons?
We'll go ahead and do them all then. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to place on the docket for the Tuesday, July seventh, two thousand and nine council meeting, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an option to purchase agreement with Hudson Circ Two LLC for property located at one nine seven five Russell Cave Pike. So moved.
Have a motion and second to add that item to the docket. Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember Lawless, I think it was.
Yes, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky Classical Theater Conservatory for ten thousand dollars for Summerfest, which starts tomorrow night, and it was approved in the FY ten budget.
Have a motion and second to add that item to the docket. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
I, we don't have that resolution, or I do not have it. Do you have a copy of it or anything? Okay. Might be best if...
We'll let Dr. Burberry do his, his magic there real quick.
I can go ahead and read the other two while you're, if you would like to...
Yes, please, and we'll take the short version tonight. All right, Madam Clerk.
Hey, resolution number thirty-one...
Excuse me, Councilmember Lawless, you might get with Mr. Burberry and try to work something out. Council, uh, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number thirty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency, Climate Showcase Communities, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this application for upgrading aeration blowers and controls at the West Hickman and Town Branch Wastewater Treatment Plants. And number thirty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a hundred-day option to purchase agreement renewable for an additional sixty-day period with Hudson Circ Two LLC for a property located at nineteen seventy-five Russell Cave Pike, at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars for the initial one-hundred-day period of the option to purchase and an additional five thousand dollars if the option to purchase is renewed. I need to go back and get the motion. You made the motion, and who seconded the motion? I'm, I was sitting here.
Councilmember Gordon.
Who seconded it? Okay, thank you.
You know, I think we may have a motion to give second reading to all those items.
I would expect so.
So how about if we go ahead and do that, and then we'll come back and take care of the Councilmember Lawless's item.
I'd be most happy to do that.
Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to suspend the rules and give second read to all.
I have a motion and second, give second reading to all the items on the docket that received first reading. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Resolution number eighteen, for second reading, a resolution accepting the bid of Bluegrass Mailing Services, establishing a price contract for mailing services for various departments and divisions of the Urban County Government. Number nineteen, a resolution accepting the bid of R&amp;L Cleaning Services, establishing a price contract for custodial services, Coleman House, for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number twenty, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Charles Taylor, Equipment Operator Senior, grade one oh nine N., twelve point eight one five hourly, in the Division of Water Quality, effective July twenty, two thousand and nine. Jamshed Barad, Deputy Director of Building Maintenance, grade one twenty-one E., three thousand, six hundred dollars bi-weekly, in the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management, effective July thirteenth, two thousand and nine. Approving the probationary Community Corrections Officer Appointment of Angela Mullins, Probation Officer, grade one-ten N., sixteen point oh six-two hourly, in the Division of Community Corrections, effective July twentieth, two thousand and nine. Twenty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a service agreement with the Lexington Fayette County Health Department for health data surveillance at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a service agreement with West Government Services for database access at a cost not to exceed four thousand, five hundred dollars. Twenty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute the Sixth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Patricia K. Howard to serve as the Emergency Medical Services Training Coordinator for the Division of Fire and Emergency Services at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Department of Juvenile Justice and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, which grant funds are in the amount of eighteen thousand dollar federal funds under the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant Program and are for programs designed to promote greater accountability in the juvenile justice center system. Twenty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the Metropolitan Medical Response Systems Project through December thirty-first, two thousand and nine, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for extension of the World Equestrian Games All Hazards Disaster Preparedness Plan Project through November thirtieth, two thousand and nine, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute the purchase of service agreements with Baby Health Services, eighteen thousand dollars. Big Brothers, Big Sisters, ten thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Bluegrass Community Action Council, thirty thousand dollars. Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program Incorporated, seventy-five thousand dollars. Bluegrass Rape Crisis Center, seventy-five thousand dollars. Bluegrass Technology Center Incorporated, three thousand dollars. Center for Women, Children, and Families, fifty thousand dollars. Chrisless House Incorporated, forty thousand dollars. Bluegrass Comprehensive Care Center, three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Community Action Council, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Hope Center Incorporated, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Mash Services of the Bluegrass Incorporated, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Movable Feast, Lexington, forty thousand dollars. Nursing Home Ombudsman Agency of the Bluegrass Incorporated, fifty thousand dollars. Salvation Army, two thousand dollars. And Sunflower Kids, twenty-five thousand dollars, to provide services to the public at a cost not to exceed two million, nine thousand, forty dollars. Twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute, on behalf of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government and the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government Public Facilities Corporation to execute a deed and any other necessary documents to transfer property located at one twenty-five Cisco Road, also known as eleven thirty-five Red Mile Road, Red Mile Place, Lexington, Kentucky, from the Public Facilities Corporation to the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. Twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Port Royal Neighborhood Association Incorporated, five hundred dollars for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number thirty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and the amount of fourteen million, six hundred thousand dollars for low-interest loans to facilitate the Lower Kane Run Pump Station and Expansion Area One projects. Thirty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Environmental Protection Agency, Climate Showcase Communities, and to provide any additional information requested in connection with this application for upgrading aeration blowers and controllers, controls at the West Hickman Town Branch Wastewater Treatment Plant. Number thirty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a hundred-day option to purchase agreement renewable for an additional sixty-day period with Hudson Circ Two LLC for a property located at nineteen seventy-five Russell Cave Pike, at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars for the initial one-hundred-day period of the option to purchase, and an additional five thousand dollars if the option to purchase is renewed.
Do you, do you have Councilmember Lawless's resolution now?
I have a heading. I have a heading that I can give first reading, and then, do you want to put it, have another motion for it to get second, or do you, did this want to be, did it want to be concluded in the other motion?
Let's, let's give it, let's just wait a minute. We'll take care of what's on the table right now. A motion to approve items one through thirty-two would be in order. Have a motion by Councilmember Stenit, second by Councilmember Crosby to approve items one through thirty-two. Any discussion? Let's proceed to vote then. Those in favor, please vote aye electronically; those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Feigl. Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. James. Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Stenit. Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blues.
Yes.
And Ms. Crosby. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. Now, we, I think, need to give first reading to Councilmember Lawless's resolution number thirty-three.
Resolution number thirty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Classical Theater Conservancy for Summerfest at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules for purposes given that second reading?
I have a motion by Councilmember Lawless, second by Councilmember Beard.
Any discussion? Those in favor giving second reading to that item, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number thirty-two for second reading, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Kentucky Classical Theater Conservancy for Summerfest at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve that item? Councilmember Lane has moved to approve that item. Councilmember Crosby has seconded it. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Those in favor of the resolution, please indicate by voting aye electronically; those opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Ellinger.
Yes.
Ms. Feigl.
Yes.
Ms. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Ms. James. Mr. Lane.
Yes.
Ms. Lawless.
Yes.
Mr. Martin. Mr. Stenit. Mr. Beard.
Aye.
Mr. Blues. And Ms. Crosby.
Thank you. Those, that resolution is unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is the communications from the mayor. Is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Crosby has moved to approve. Vice Mayor Gray has seconded the motion. Any discussion? All, Councilmember Beard.
I, I really don't remember what we decided to do about the one individual. Are we going to head, are we going to head and prove it, or?
Correct. We voted on it, and...
I know we talked, bounced around.
We voted on it, and the motion to amend was defeated.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Those in favor then of approving the communications from the mayor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There's some communications from the mayor for information only. That takes us down to announcements. Are there any?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I have an announcement, but I know we've had some confusion up here